I'll give a 30-second, one-minute notice so we can, our clerks can get everything ready to go. Thank you. Okay, everyone, we will go ahead, call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Gilbert Council Meeting for June 1st, 2021. We will start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Do we have our pastor here? I believe it is Ron Derrick from the Church of Latter-day Saints. Thank you. They'll be right there. Thank you.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we come before Thee humbly this night as we've gathered together for this town council meeting. We're very grateful for all those that have taken their time to be here tonight to express an interest in the civic affairs of this people. We're grateful for Mayor Peterson, the council members, and the staff that are providing all these services and support to this great area. Heavenly Father, we thank Thee for the many blessings we enjoy here in this place. We're grateful for the prosperity. We enjoy the peace. Father, we do know that we live in a time of great unrest. We ask for a special blessing upon us that the lower parts of our character might be overcome, our natural disposition to contention, hatred, and challenge and strife. We pray that we might seek to see through Thy divine eyes one another and that we might have an enlightened perspective on the issues that face us, that we might be able to make an impact in this area for good, that Thy blessings might be able to be poured out more fully upon us and upon our children, upon our grandchildren, upon our parents and grandparents. Will Thou please pour out Thy Spirit upon us? That we might be inspired in our discourse, in our dialogue, that we might seek unanimity. We do pray that Thou would accept of our gratitude for all that we've received again, Father, and offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Derrick. Thank you for being here this evening. Next, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilmember Hendricks, I believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. To the republic.
Next, we will have the roll call by our town clerk.
Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yentz.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. Presentations and proclamations. This evening, we have proclamations that were issued and not presented during a council meeting. They are a proclamation declaring the month of June 2021 as Men's Health Month and a proclamation declaring the month of June 2021 as Post-Traumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Month. Now, we'll move into communications from citizens, and I will ask my vice mayor to take over. Thank you, Mayor Peterson. At this time, we'll take our communications from citizens. The Gilbert Town Council uses this as an opportunity for you to speak of items in the community that are of interest to you. We are listening intently, but we cannot respond due to Arizona Open Meeting Law. We're prohibited from responding to the issues that have not been properly noticed. We ask that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please state your name and address or place of residence, and then begin speaking. Please observe the common decorum of this room and courtesy. If you have any signs with you, please don't raise or wave them about due to the people sitting next to you. Please refrain from clapping or cheering in any way. We'll start with Christine Dees.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity. I've lived in Gilbert 40 years. First graduating class of Gilbert High on Elliott Road. And my daughter graduated 2009. I've lived in my house in Greenfield Lakes for 20 years. And I just can't imagine this project going forward, the staff. It's not growth. It's, you know, we have Topgolf and Main Event up the street. And then we have a water park on Higley and Queen Creek. We have another indoor go-kart park coming right up at Santan Village Parkway next to the Santan Mall. It's, this is just not a place for something with the loud, the noises, the traffic, the air pollution, the noise pollution. It'll just ruin two neighborhoods, livelihoods. And it just, just, we have enough entertainment here. If you want something there, put like a recreational center for kids for after-school or summer where they build their own parking lot because there's not enough parking as there is now. When there's hockey tournaments going on and baseball and softball games and soccer games, there is not enough parking. So it's just gonna be a nightmare for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Terri Miller.
Hi, I'm Terri Miller. 2523 East Stotler Drive in Greenfield Lakes. And my husband and I have lived in Arizona since 1978. Got one daughter who is a native, and she just married a native Arizonan a couple of years ago. My husband and I were retired in our retirement home in Sun Lakes. And then last fall, she announced that she was pregnant. And so we fought really hard to get a house in Greenfield Lakes right down the street so that our grandchild, who was just born a couple of weeks ago, could, could share our lives together. There was no sign posted on that property where they're proposing this go-kart track. Had there been, my husband and I would have probably given that a little bit of consideration. I think that should be a law that's enacted, that there should be future things posted of what's going to be built. I have learned that this lease was kind of quietly and questionably obtained. If it's been there for three years, there's no reason that there couldn't have been a sign there. Also, you know, this is gonna be 250 yards from somebody's bedroom window? I mean, it's crazy. Sometime, I've got past experience as a legal secretary for a real estate attorney. And sometimes you have to think outside the box on these things. If you want to go ahead with this, take a carousel, take a train, take something. Put it in that tiny little area that is that park and make it a nice park. Keep the dog park. But put the go-kart track in somebody else's area where there are bigger parks and it could be better used. We are not against having the go-kart track or the splash pad or, you know, what has been proposed. We are opposed to where it's going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Denise Berkheimer.
Hi, I'm Denise Berkheimer. I live in Greenfield Lakes. My home is three houses. My backyard butts Knox and it's three houses down from the corner of Greenfield. My husband and I, along with our three children, bought our home 20-plus years ago. We built it. We moved from Mesa to get away from the noise and the busy area we were in. When we built our home, our neighborhood was the last thing there. Everything south of us was farm, few little farmhouses on Greenfield. We could sit out night and have it be quiet, perfectly silent, and see all the stars. But we weren't naive. We knew development would come. My ancestors go five generations back here in the valley. Sorry. I grew up on a farm on Gilbert Road. Believe me, I've seen change. I've seen development and growth. And we expected it here in Gilbert too when we bought. But we knew that Gilbert was the community that we wanted to have our family in. Now our children has grown, have grown, and they are married, and we have seven grandchildren. And they're all still members of the Gilbert community. Although we knew that growth would come, the proposed go-kart park less than a fourth of a mile from our home will change our lives forever. It will ruin our neighborhood. It is not good for our community. If it's approved, we would be forced to sell our home. My husband has COPD, and I would be concerned with his health. I think we should all be concerned with our health, even without a chronic condition. I have a neighbor that has an autistic son that's sensitive to noise. Their home backs Greenfield. Their backyard is literally across the street from the proposed location. I love working in my yard. I love my flowers and my vegetable gardens and my kids playing in the pool. I have neighbors that have beautiful pools. I can't imagine the noise impact that this will have on us. The quality, the air quality, noise, and lights will affect all of our lifestyles. If this is approved and we are forced to sell, it will impact our resale. I have no doubt. Nobody will want to live next to this. I know we don't. Please don't let this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Dean Christensen.
I always turn it off. All right. You guys have met me before. I'm Dean Christensen. I'd like to talk today about the noise ordinance of Gilbert. By the way, I live in Greenfield Lakes. And by the way, it's not 250, it's not 250 yards, it's 250 feet from the nearest house. So anyways, I've been here 24 years. We're one of the original purchasers of our home. I'd like to talk about the fact that during the planning commission meeting, MD Acoustics and Ben Cooper from SAP Holings quoted Section 42-61, but they completely omitted in both the noise study and their presentation, Section 4264, which is titled "Unnecessary Noise." "It shall be unlawful for any person without justification to make or continue or cause or permit to be made or continued any unnecessary excessive or offensive noise which disturbs the peace or quiet of any neighborhood or which causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person or normal sensitivities residing in this area." It says, "The factors with which will be considered in determining a violation of this provision of this section will include, but not limited to, the following: the volume of noise, the intensity of the noise, whether the nature of the noise is unusual or unusual, whether the origin of the noise is natural or unnatural, the volume and intensity of the background noise, the proximity of the noise to residential sleeping facilities." That couldn't be any more clear. That's Section 4264. "The nature and zoning of the area with which the noise emanates, the density of the inhabitation of the area with which the noise emanates." The density, excuse me, the time of day or night of the noise occurs. Now, we all know now, the lease grants them to operate from 8:00 in the morning until midnight at night. I don't know if they're gonna do that, but I mean, that's, that's rather alarming. No pun intended, alarming. Let's see, the duration of the noise, whether the noise is recurrent. There's just a couple more sentences. Intermittent or constant. And I think the rest of them are not quite as relevant, but I think you get the message here. This is just a terrible location for this idea. And, you know, if you have an opportunity to do the right thing on June 15th, and we hope that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Julie Moore.
I'm Julie Moore. I live in Cottonwood Crossings. I would like to just say to you, do the right thing for the people who put you where you're sitting tonight. It's certain that it would not be approved by you if this were in your backyard. The noise, the pollution, the traffic and parking that are sure to be a big problem, not only for the existing successful business, the sports programs, and the use of the dog park, and the close proximity of residential properties. Do the right thing for the people who put you where you are.
Our next speaker will be Elena Stumpf.
Kind of little. Hi, my name's Elena, and I live in Greenfield Lakes. I live at the corner of Portland and Kent Avenue. I'm the second from the corner, so the only thing between Greenfield Road is one row of houses. So what am I, 300 feet from it? I want to be kind of transparent and say that I love go-karts, love them. And I'm pretty competitive. So I can say that I know for a fact that people do not go to go-kart tracks or amusement parks to use their inside voice. Because I know that I'm one of those that is doing everything I can to have a good time, yelling, screaming, laughing, having a good time. I can hear the PA system when the high school that is on the 202 in Higley, when they have their football games. So if I can hear that PA system, there's no way you can tell me that I'm not gonna hear the go-karts and the yelling and the screaming and the plane crash and bombs that are gonna be at the miniature golf. When my son was a teenager, he would play video games and he would play them very loud. And he would be very loud. And I used to tell him and that when I come home after work, after working all day, like my house should be the one place that I am comfortable and I can relax and have some sanity. I've put a lot of time and energy and money in my home. I've been there for 14 years. And I don't think that a place that I've spent that much time and money and love is someplace that I should learn to tolerate what's going on around me or to get used to the noises. I can also say, I used to be a teenager. And I don't want to be naive about the amusement park going there and the trash and the litter that is going to happen. I say that because I frequently visit the lake that's over on Warner, and I take my dogs over there. And before that housing development was built, it was really nice and clean and pretty. And since that housing development has been built and the teenagers are coming to the lake, the, there's trash in the lake. They get up and they leave their water bottles and there are plenty of trash cans provided. I'm not saying that all kids are like that, but...
Elena, could you please make your final statement?
Okay. My final statement is, I don't want to sound like a bratty little sister, but we were there first. And I think that we deserve the right to be able to voice our opinion and have it heard with something that's this drastic, that's going to affect our lifestyle.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sandra Avery.
Hi there. My name is Sandra Avery, and I live at Cottonwood Crossings. So here we are again. This is probably the last time, well, not probably, it is the last time before the appeal on June 15th. And I just want to ask you to think of yourself in your homes. You're up in the morning, whatever time, having your coffee, just relaxing. You have families. You have friends. You're in your backyard, just relaxing, enjoying the birds or whatever you're enjoying. And got away from my notes here. Sitting in the backyards and sleeping with your windows open most of the year. And it's just all about your daily routine. And so as you go through that day, dinner, whatever, then all of a sudden, if you think of these 21 gas-powered go-karts, you think of the miniature golf section that's gonna have music that maybe you won't like, maybe you will, but it's gonna be loud. You have these simulated plane crashes and bombs. You've got, in the proposal, it says if the go-karts are too loud, they can turn the music up. You have screaming and happy kids. We all like that. But from 8:00 in the morning, when you get up and you're in your pajamas and you're hanging out until 11:00 or midnight when you're getting ready for bed, seven days a week, all those weeks, all year. I guess, I'm just saying that if you can think of us as just families that are just wanting the peaceful and the quietness and everything, and if you can really think of, would you want this project 100 feet, 200 feet from your place or your parents' place? And just how disturbing that would be just to your calmness of every day. So I'm really hoping, and if the microphone wasn't attached here, I'd get down on my knees and beg you to just really consider us as people and our daily lifestyle and how it's quiet and it's nice. And to have this all the time, every single day, what that will just do to those everyday things. So I hope on June 15th, you'll think of us and make the decision to just move this to somewhere else. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Randy Nelson.
Good evening. I'm Randy Nelson. I'm at 1324 South Portland Avenue. Or as our attorney, Tim Masada, says, I'm at the epicenter of this adventure park, 250 feet from my bedroom window. This first page is a description, rising out of the desert hillside in Arizona and overlooking a lush valley of irrigated land. That's Castle Goff's description of what they have in Yuma. Take a look at that map. Is that not exactly precisely the situation that we're in? You can then look at the second page. And what I have done is done a Google search on 150 family fund centers. And all I've done is gone line by line. You'll notice there's a Pigeon Forge, Tennessee in there somehow, even though I didn't search Tennessee. So whatever turned up is what's there. You will see zero outdoor carts in Arizona. You will see one a total out of 150. Actually, let me start at the beginning. Castle Goff's website has 31 projects on it, none near a neighborhood. Add four more from SAP's response to the RHP are also not near a neighborhood. That's 35 projects not near a neighborhood so far. Then you go to this spreadsheet, and I've done 150 searches for family fund centers, et cetera. 148 of those are not near neighborhoods. What you will find in the back are a couple maps showing the two that are near neighborhoods. The last one was done in 1959, butted up against the Pomona Freeway. Again, not exactly our situation. Meaning that there is not a single instance that a family fund park has been put into a neighborhood in the southwest United States. My guess is I could expand this to the rest of the country. I'd get the same projection. So 183 projects, nothing. This is not a coincidence. It was the planning commissions who put citizens first. It was town councils who protected their citizens from noise pollution, from light pollution, and protected them from unregulated go-kart emissions, where running one hour equals a normal car running 350 miles. It was town councils saying that this obviously doesn't belong in those situations. It was not a coincidence that 83, 183 projects are not near neighborhoods. It is my belief that the previous town council was gaslighted exactly as we were to have every opportunity. From me personally being told... From me personally being told no plans for go-karts in 2016 to Chris Godinez being informed five weeks ago that there would be electric go-karts, we were hoodwinked and misdirected at every opportunity. I believe the same thing happened to the previous town council. And mainly because you didn't know if you were talking to a friend of 10 or 15 years versus the lawyer who has given a piece of the company to sell you something. Who were you talking to that day to make that, this, an acceptable thing in a neighborhood? It has never happened.
Please make your final statement, Randy.
It is basically time to correct that ethical lapse. We need to move this to the regional park, we need to move this to any other of the Gilbert properties. It does not belong between two neighborhoods and a dog park. A dog park for quiet dogs. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Monica Weiser.
My name is Monica Weiser and I live in Greenfield Lakes. I am a realtor and I'm here to speak against the Santan Park Adventure. I have worked with folks finding homes since 2002. I've worked with distressed buyers that lost their homes in declining markets, which we can all remember that time. I worked with buyers to tell me they don't want to see the smoke stacks from their backyard. Can you imagine how that's going to be here in gas engines, running those go-karts till midnight? With the Santan Adventure Park going in at Crosswoods, these home values will drop. Over the years, I have seen different things change the market value. Now you approved a park with no consideration of the homeowners in the area and how it would affect our property values. Not all land improvements add value. I am asking you to really reconsider your position in the Santan Adventure Park from being built and keep our property values strong. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Nikki Reber.
Hi, I'm Nikki Reber, 1138 South Wanda Drive. I've spoken to you before. I don't want that thing going in for any reason, any way, shape, or form. It will devalue my property. That means less taxes for the town of Gilbert. It also means less money in my pocket to pay for me to be in a home when I need one. There's a home that just sold right next door to me, it's 1128 South Wanda Drive. Those people had no clue that they were buying a home where this was going in. I finally had the opportunity to track them down and speak to them. They paid $380,000 for a three-bedroom, 1,400-square-foot house in order to get a house. And now they're telling me if they had known this, there is no way in God's green earth they would have bought that place. They're not, they don't want to live in a neighborhood like that. I don't want to be in a neighborhood like that. My position is that that thing is fine if it's not in Crossroads Park. It belongs in the regional park where you have plenty of space. I don't know what they do about the splash pad since Regional Park already has a splash pad. But it belongs somewhere where it's not affecting neighborhoods. You have the land available to you, trade them the land. The other concern I have is that what they want to do right now, that's only for a portion of that land. They still have another phase they could develop. So are we all going to be back here in a year fighting over whatever they want to do on that other phase? I think I'm about the only one who even thought about that. That first phase with the golf carts, et cetera, that's for now. We don't know what they intend to do to us on that other piece. So they need not to do anything. I hope you will take this into consideration, that all these people have showed up, we've shown up every couple of weeks down here to let you know this is wrong. And we would appreciate that you take that into serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker will be Kasha Hosford.
Kasha Hosford, I live in...
Can you check that mic and make sure it's on? Please, thank you.
I found it.
There we go, thank you.
Kasha Hosford, I'm from Santan Ranch. A couple of months ago, we had a really unfortunate happenstance in our neighborhood where a man was killed. He lived in a behavioral facility that's in our neighborhood. It is run by Tilda Manor. And as unfortunate as his death, the oversights that were taken to get the man into that home, to create that situation, it's left us in the neighborhood feeling very scared if that situation is going to reoccur and if it's going to suddenly become outside of the home. Are we, as a community, as a neighborhood, are we safe? Those who live near, having surveillance on their doorbells, have found that residents will leave at all hours of the day or night and police officers are called constantly, consistently. And doing research through Tilda Manor's other facilities throughout the valley, there have been significant reports of having police officers there. I don't feel that Tilda Manor is doing a very good job at creating a safe place for both the, those who are there for behavioral support, mental support. And they're definitely not creating a safe environment for where they have placed their homes in each of these neighborhoods. It is, it's one of those things that can easily be pushed to the state or the city. I think the city has complete and total authority to be able to revoke that license under very specific misdemeanors, that they are causing negligence for the taking care of the adults that live in those facilities as well as somehow the supervision has been lacking, that people are able to leave when they need to be monitored 24/7. People are able to kill somebody else. However, that person got placed there, there was a major oversight. And I would like the city, the towns council, to find the articles. As I had done my search, I didn't bring them up here. But under Fair Housing Act, it is totally within your right to be able to revoke the license and to bar that business to be running in our neighborhood. And I would hope that you would also check because violence and negligence is happening in those areas and we would like to be feeling safe in our community again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Chris Lineberry.
I brought my right glasses this time. Thank you for letting me be here, my name is Chris Lineberry, I too live in Santan Ranch. Just trying to pull my comments up. So good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. This is the second time I've been here to talk to you about Tilda Manor and the operation of their group home for mentally ill adults in our neighborhood. I do find it refreshing and a very positive thing that we recognize, June, as PTSD Awareness Month. I do want to bring to your attention that a homicide in a child's neighborhood impacts a child's ability to self-regulate and decreases cognitive ability. In fact, a 2017 study found that violence negatively correlated with IQ and gray matter. And the child did not have to be a victim of that violence for it to have a negative impact. It is a similar response to PTSD. One of the people who was in this home had already been convicted of murder twice. He was placed 528 feet away from an elementary school. And the last time I was here, you were asked what your thoughts were. And Madam Mayor, I appreciate you saying you thought that place needed to be shut down. And while I applaud that statement, I am disappointed by the lack of action. In politics today, it seems that there's a tendency to kick the can of responsibility down or up the chain. And we saw our governor do this over and over again. And when confronted last month, it appears that we're drawing from that same playbook. Responsibility was placed at the feet of the Department of Health. And to be honest, there's plenty of blame to go around. Governor Ducey had an opportunity, there was a bill passed last week that would dissolve the psychiatric review board that placed this individual at the house, and he vetoed it. We cannot count on the state to make this better. I know I'm running out of time. You know, I guess the bottom line is, Ms. Mayor, you said last time, there's no way we could have known this man was in that house. And you are 100% correct, there is no way. However, one really knows, rarely ever really knows their neighbor. Domestic violence, substance abuse are all, they stretch from Yale to jail. And it doesn't matter where you go, there they are. In this case, though, we do know the neighbor. My issue is not with the individuals who were in that home, it's with the lack of accountability and protective oversight that this group home has demonstrated and been fined for multiple times. Past behavior is not past behavior if you keep doing it. Policemen called 53 times to this house and 187 times, I'm sorry, 176 times to the house in Mesa. They went for a missing person. The person at the home, the worker, said, "It took me an hour to call you because I didn't realize she was gone." That was the owner of the home who said that. How these people can be allowed to house a convicted murderer, I don't know. We, you have, I believe, a duty to do the right thing. This can't be a case to kick the can down the street. My kids are impacted, the kids in my neighborhood are impacted, and none of us want this next to our home. I know that you got into this because you wanted to make a positive change in the community, and I truly believe that. Please do it and shut this place down. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker will be Kristi Coon.
Okay. My name is Kristi Coon, I'm tired to talk about the land grab and the waste of taxpayer money. And about 1060, we are asking you to not take all our land from Gilbert Road to Lindsay Road, where people are going to lose many, many of their backyards in favor of, you know, inanimate domain. There may not be room for our horses if they tear down our barn and our chickens, chicken coop. We have a very strong block barn into our backyard and we'd be very sad to see it go. We need, what they say is there's going to be a wall, a brand-new wall that used to be just a gray wall, they're going to build another wall and then we won't have any SS gate to have some chicken feed into our barn in order to feed our horses. Yeah. Hay, we need hay from Higley Feed through our gate to feed our horses. And without the wall and the back gate, we won't be able to feed our horses and we may need to transfer over them to border horse facility. And we've owned our horses for many, many years, we've had a barn for 27 years. And my mom and dad and I are very proud owners to have three horses. And it would be really, really bad, worse, waste of taxpayer money if we just lose our property, our expensive, hard-working property just because somebody needs some asset through irrigation pipe underneath our barn and that needs to be fixed.
What she's trying to say is...
The sewer needs to be fixed.
There's a sewer line that goes and it just kind of crosses over a corner of our barn. And it can be repaired through the sewer mains. It doesn't take but a day and they can repair it for 30 to 50 years even. And so we're just hoping that you're going to change your mind and find a better way that won't be so expensive. We've hoped that you can put in, go through gates that we can have built to be able to access those sewer mains at any time that you want. And we're certainly going to let you in to maintain things. And so, anything else? Oh, do we, just asking, does our community have a community town council? I know this is a Gilbert Town Council. And isn't there one that helps to relay our needs and what the community would like? So, anything else?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our last speaker for this evening, will be Sarah Watts.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of Gilbert Town Council. My name is Sarah Watts, I'm a resident of Gilbert as well as the president and CEO of the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of our Board of Directors, I'd like to express our support for council to place the bond for transportation infrastructure on the November ballot. By unanimous vote of our Public Policy Committee and our Board of Directors, we feel the components of this bond support our current and future employer base, attract new talent to our employers, and support the ease and safety of movement for human capital goods and service within our community. The transportation bond of 2007, as it expires, we have concern that the safety and upkeep as well as the attractiveness of our community without funds. We also have concern for the cost, the increased costs of the proposed projects should the project, the bond vote be delayed. We appreciate the project-based approach of this bond. We thank the town council and the town staff as well as the citizens' transportation task force for their work to prepare this thoughtful proposal. And on behalf of our Board, we thank you for giving us your consideration in support of this position. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our communication from citizens and we'll move to the consent calendar. We're going to pull items 5, 7, and 11 for discussion. Are there any other items that council members would like to pull for discussion? Okay. May I please have a motion to approve consent calendar items 2 through 4, 6, 8 through 10, 11A, and 12? So moved.
Second.
Please vote. The motion passes. We'll move to item number 5, Councilmember Yentes.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I just like the ability to parse this motion out a little bit. I'd like to support the $110,000 from the Neighbor to Neighbor Funds and the Share My Stamp Funds and the $10,000 for the store funds. And if we, so if we could parse that out into a separate motion, I'd appreciate that. I'm happy to make that if that's...
Yes, please make the motion.
Motion to approve the $110,000 in Neighbor to Neighbor and Share My Stamp Funds and the $10,000 in the town store funds for the specified nonprofit support.
Second. Please vote. That motion passes. So we'll need a motion to approve item 5A for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 allocation of $310,000 in general funds.
So moved.
Second. Please vote. Motion passes 6-1. And then may we have a motion to approve item 5B, the contract with Ascend in the amount of $123,000 and authorize the mayor to execute the required documents.
So moved.
Second. Please vote. That motion passes 6-1. We'll move to item number 7, the capital improvement plan, Councilmember Yentes. Councilmember Yentes.
Yes, thank you. I won't belabor the points I made at the previous hearing on this item, but permission to vote separately.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve item number seven for adoption of the Gilbert Fiscal Year 2022, 2031 Capital Improvement Program.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Please vote. That passes 5-2. And then we'll move to item number 11, which is consider adoption of a resolution for call of election for a special bond election on November 2, 2021. I'd like to speak on this item because this is a resolution that would provide funding for streets, transportation, and infrastructure-related improvements. I just wanted to give a little bit of background. And I'll actually preface everything with a big thank you to staff and members of our Citizens Transportation Task Force for their years of hard work on leading up to this moment. The last bond election to fund street-related projects was approved by voters 14 years ago, when Gilbert's estimated population was just under 200,000 residents. Since then, Gilbert's population has increased over 32% to approximately 260,000 residents. In December of 2019, the Citizens Transportation Task Force was formed by council to address Gilbert's current and future transportation-related needs. And that task force was comprised of nine members selected from various areas throughout Gilbert to ensure representation from the entire community. At the spring financial retreat this year, the Citizens Transportation Task Force presented us with a resolution to propose approving, calling for the transportation general bond election in the amount of $515 million for the purpose of transportation projects that provide safety, congestion management, reconstruction, multimodal enhancements, transportation technology enhancements, and redevelopment plan implementation improvements. Currently, the town of Gilbert does not have any other way to pay for these types of projects. We don't have a transportation sales tax. Maintaining the town's transportation system saves road users money through reduced maintenance on vehicles and through time saved that is not spent sitting in traffic. I would urge town council to present this bond to voters so that they can decide whether to maintain our high-quality transportation system. And I know we have a couple of comments from other council members. Councilmember Yentes.
Thank you. There's a lot within this proposed bond package that I'm very supportive of and agree that this is an appropriate way to fund transportation. I prefer this method rather than having a dedicated sales tax. I think it provides transparency for voters. They can see projects specifically that are being prioritized through debt financing. And I do, I like that approach. I just have a couple issues with the way that this is posed. One, I think, as we've done in the past, we've broken up bond packages into smaller amounts and done them, you know, more frequently. I do like that approach. We had that discussion at our financial retreat in the spring. The reason I like that is because I think, one, you can prioritize from a time standpoint. There's kind of a more quicker correlation for voters. They can see what they voted on with, you know, how things come to fruition. But also, you can kind of keep that debt capacity kind of wrangled in to some, to some degree. And so there are some projects. It's not a great percentage of the overall proposition as far as things that I don't necessarily think are specifically transportation, purely transportation. So it would be my preference to send as clean of a bond package as possible to the voters if we're going to label it transportation. I know that you can argue those things both ways. So that would be one improvement I would make. Again, it's not a huge percentage. It's only, you know, maybe five that are designated Parks and Recs programs, but we could maybe prioritize those in different ways. And then my other main issue with this is, and why I think maybe parsing this out into, you know, smaller chunks would be that, I really, really passionately dislike sending things to the voters on off-cycle election years. I guess I'm a purist when it comes to consolidated elections. I think it's better for taxpayers, it's better for voters to have that continuity, the predictability of understanding that there's, you know, kind of a cycle to these things, and they get used to that, and I think that that's fair. I know we've had some issues come up because COVID, you know, delayed kind of our anticipation of the first election cycle for this, and so that's posed some issues. I'm wondering if parsing it out into separate bond packages might give us more flexibility to address kind of the immediate ones while, you know, not putting every project on the back burner because I do see the, I guess, the urgency for, you know, having these funds available because we don't have the other funding sources. So those are a couple of my thoughts. I appreciate and like to hear some of the other council members' thoughts as well.
Comments from other council members?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. I think we are in a position, because of COVID, where this got pushed off. And the longer that we wait, the cost of construction is just going through the roof right now. And so what we want to do is we want to get ahead of that. And I also want to remind everybody that what we're doing is we are approving the authority to spend the money, knowing that each of those projects have to come back through council and that we have to take the time to determine when the priority and when we spend that money. How do we keep the bonding capacity within the tax rate that we've already set? So all of those decisions will be making, be made as time goes on. And so the public will have a good view of what projects are coming forward. I feel comfortable because we have a long history of not ever exceeding the limit that we've been authorized to use. We have put projects on the back burner during uncertain economic times and held off spending money. In some cases, while it was the right choice to do, we're going to have to play some catch-up on that from, even from the recession on some of our maintenance and replacement on our streets. So I appreciate your comments and where you're coming from. I just feel that, in this particular case, I'm going to be in support. Thank you.
Thank you. I also agree with, I agree with Councilmember Yentes, and I think there should be consistency for the voters. And it's nice to have that in the common election years and then the off-cycle years to... I would rather, I prefer to see these bonds in the regular election cycle. But this has been put off due to COVID and other, and other events. And I think there's also some benefits to staff having the knowledge of the full bond amount as opposed to parsing this up, to having the full bond amount at their disposal for their planning purposes. They have long-term plans for two-year, five-year, 10-years-out for some of the maintenance and reconstruction of our roads, not to mention the improvements that we know that we need. So I support having the bond in one lump sum as opposed to parsing it out for those reasons.
Councilmember Hendricks, Sir Anderson?
I won't repeat everything that's been said because I agree with it. And I totally understand the idea of maybe two years ago, talking about parsing this out somehow. But some things have really happened during that time. There's two, two things that I would point to and that I guess, to me, would suggest a sense of urgency about this. And one is that the percent of people that are satisfied with our infrastructure in the town is going down every year in the survey. They're telling us that we need to spend money to improve our infrastructure in the town. And it's no small matter, I think, that it just so happens that the infrastructure is a key pillar of our City of the Future initiative. And I think that in order to continue on with that initiative and provide the excellence that we are trying to do in providing the infrastructure that supports everything that we're trying to do in the town, that we can't lose sight of that. That initiative, I think, is supportive of what the residents of the town are telling us about infrastructure. And I think it's important that we follow their lead and go forward with this. And I certainly would be more inclined, if it hadn't been for COVID, to try and get this during the regular election cycle. I totally agree with that. But we're beyond that now. That's it.
I'll make a few comments. Thank you for everything that's been said this evening. I wanted to thank the Citizens Transportation Task Force for all the work that they did. Vice Mayor Kaprowski started out on that board before she applied for the town council, and it's been going on for quite some time. They were very willing to come back and regroup earlier this year and bring it back for more discussion. They spent a lot of time working with staff. I had the pleasure of sitting through a couple of those virtual meetings with them. As the conversation goes about breaking this down to smaller amounts or breaking this down over several years, the reason that we did that back in the 2000s, and I remember very well, we did three bonds right in a row, and they were much lower amounts because of the fact that we didn't have the bonding capacity that we have today in the town of Gilbert. Today, we have the ability to run just one bond and not have to be able to break that down into different bonds. But with saying that, asking for a $515 million bond from our residents to do all the great things that have been said here this evening and that Councilmember Anderson just reiterated, we're not asking permission to go out and bond for $515 million on day one. We will be breaking those bonds down over the coming years as we need them for projects into the future. I understand the hesitancy of running this in a non-election year, but from the research that I've done and the conversations that I've had, this actually provides way more transparency for our voters because this will be the only item that the town of Gilbert will have on the ballot this year. It won't get confused with anything else that's going on. It won't be the last thing on a ballot that nobody's going to pay attention to. There won't be 25,000 undervotes on it because of the fact that nobody makes it all the way down the ballot to vote on everything that's currently there. So with that said, I will be supporting this bond ballot. I think it is the right thing to do. And I think if we hadn't delayed it from last year, we would already be reaping the benefits of being able to bond for that amount. But with COVID, we decided to put it off, and we will be voting on it this November with a full mail-in ballot for our residents.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Is there going to be any opportunity, even if it's at the town facility, for people to be able to vote in person for designated amount of days or...?
There will not be. It will be a complete and total mail-in ballot, and that's per the county because there are no other elections going on. We have the benefit of, there'll be a Southwest Gas election now on our ballot this year, but it will be a complete and total mail-in ballot. And one was just run in the West Valley and ran really well.
I'll just say one last point. Thank you for all your comments on this item. This bond measure would remain within the currently set existing 99-cent tax rate, secondary property tax rate that Gilbert has. May I have a motion to approve item number 11 on the consent agenda?
Oh, this has been your baby all along, Vice Mayor. Do you want to make that motion?
I would love to. I will move to approve adoption of a resolution for a call of election for a special bond election on November 2, 2021.
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes 5-2. And that concludes the consent calendar. Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have a few items. We have an annexation, a zoning case, code of Gilbert, and budget. Sorry, I'm trying to turn the page, and the pages are stuck together. Two budget items before we get into our full budget discussion. Does anybody wish to have any of these five items pulled off to discuss separately? Hope I counted that right. Yes, five items pulled off to discuss separately. Or have any presentations done on 13, 14, 15, 16, or 17? No?
Mayor, may I ask a question? On 13, we don't actually approve anything on that, do we? We just held the public hearing?
Let me open the public hearing on that. On 13, we are approving the annexation. Is that correct? Yes. Yes, we're approving the annexation.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that worked.
And I think in this case, it's really more of a formality because it's to match what was on the map to make sure that this is all...
Oh, thank you.
Thinking if I read that right, making sure that I read that right. Do we have a motion, then, to approve items closing the public hearing? Do I have a motion to approve 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Who said second? Well, Councilmember Yentes. We have a motion by Councilmember September, seconded by Councilmember Yentes. Please vote. And that concludes the public hearing. We will now recess our regular meeting and reconvene in special meeting to have a discussion about our budget. It's items 18 and 19. And if you want to discuss them at the same time, that's fine. We'll just have to do two separate motions for the agenda this evening. Any comments? Does anybody need any presentation? I know we had a pretty lengthy discussion during our preliminary hearing. I don't know if anyone has anything they'd like to add tonight.
You're going to let Kelly off?
I might let Kelly off, yeah. Anyone? Any comments, questions, anything? I'm not seeing anything.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the property tax levy for $25.8 million, which was what was approved last year.
I have a question about the motion. Do I understand correctly, Councilmember Yentes, that you're making a motion to lower the tax levy so that Gilbert residents would pay less tax?
That would be the effect of it.
Second.
Could we have some discussion before we vote on that?
Absolutely.
Kelly, do you mind? This is my first time, so I'm sorry if my questions are pretty elementary. But is it my understanding that we have a debt that we need to pay of $27,750 at this time?
Mayor, Councilmember Tilke, we do have debt, and we would need the levy that's posted in order to make those payments next year or have funding come from another place. We typically use the most restricted first, and that would be the property tax money that voters authorized for the debt that they authorized.
Thank you. And may I ask, Councilmember Yentes, if you are recommending a lower amount, what are we going to pay the additional tax with?
Mayor, Councilmember Tilke, you could pay that with general fund dollars.
And is that what you're... Does that have to be part of your motion? Or I'm trying to figure that out.
No, I don't believe it does.
I don't think so. I think the motion would just be for the actual property tax levy as it's on the agenda this evening. Then we would have to have future discussions as to how we would make up those funds. Am I right, Kelly? How we would make up those funds to pay back that debt that we are required to pay.
Thank you.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Yentes and a second by Councilmember Hendricks to approve the levy at $25 million. What was the number, Councilmember Yentes? I'm sorry.
$25.8.
$25.8 million. Can I have a vote on that, please? That vote fails with a vote of 5 to 2. Can I have a, if you're ready, without any further discussion, could I have a motion for the levy?
I'll move to approve item number 18.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Tilke. Please vote. And that motion... And that motion passes 5 to 2. Now we'll move on to our final budget hearing with our, we've already discussed this at the preliminary budget hearing, as I mentioned a few weeks ago. Do we have any further discussion? Any comments, questions that you, any questions for Kelly since we have her here? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I just want to make one comment, and that's, I do appreciate Kelly and her team. I, I think Kelly's one of our most outstanding employees here and appreciate all her work and her willingness to answer and entertain any and all questions. I've pretty much exhausted my comments from the study session as well as the preliminary hearing, so I won't reiterate those. But I do also want to thank the mayor for improving the process this year. I really did appreciate having the study session, being able to discuss a broader context around the budget. I think that was helpful to hear other people's thoughts. And if, in any way, that helps frame or shape continued dialogue in those other areas of potential reform or consideration, I think that was a major improvement in the process, and I do appreciate that. And thanks to everybody who's been working through this process.
Thanks, Councilmember Yentes. I really appreciate that. I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to all sit together and have that conversation about the budget. You made some excellent points during the study session that I still have in my phone, and I know that several of those we will bring back to discuss in the future. I appreciated that opportunity as well. Thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, Councilmember Yentes.
Just a question. What was our final resolution on those units you were talking about?
Oh, the ionization.
Ionization units.
They're included.
They're included.
Okay. But they have to come back. Okay.
And I think they're probably doing a little bit more investigating on those, too.
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, so we're clear. What I took from that is we were, we have installed them at the Public Safety Training Facility, and we will use that as a pilot and track the information that we learned from that and then come back to council and have a discussion about deploying those in the rest of the town facilities.
Thank you, Patrick. I think that's pretty much what they heard at the study session from all of us. Okay, then would anyone like to make a motion on the budget?
I'll move to approve item number 19.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Please vote. And motion passes with a 5-2 vote. I want to just take a moment to thank staff. I know Councilmember Yentes said that Kelly is an amazing member of the staff, and I know that Kelly would say that it's her team all together that does a great job with this. And I think that it's all of our staff that come together to work on this budget. It is, we, we refer to it quite often as Hunger Games because you have to fight your way through to get the projects and the, and the new employees, the new FTEs added to the budget every single year. And I tell you that I appreciate everything that you do on a daily basis. There is never a moment that I don't reach out to Kelly to ask questions on the budget and have immediate responses from her of exactly what I'm looking for. And she is always, her whole team is always so willing to work with us and to do the best that they can based on our policies that we have set forward as a council. We do so much more with so much less here in Gilbert. It's always so impressive to me to see, and this year is, it is, two years ago in 2019, we actually hit over $1 billion on our budget for the first time ever. Last year, you came in in 2020 during COVID with the idea to say, okay, our budget's less than 2019 as a growing community. Our budget's less than 2019. Let's add these tiers in to make sure that if we're having a difficult time financially, we don't have to spend the money that we're projecting to spend. If the money isn't coming in, we're not going to be spending that money. And then this year, you came in with a budget that is even under the budget that you came in with last year. I don't know how many cities and towns in this state or this country can do those things. And because of the way that you have handled our finances and our budget, we are, what, 41 in the country out of 19,000 cities and towns. And you all deserve a great big round of applause for everything that you do for this community every single day. And I hope that you know how much that I appreciate that. And thank you for all of your hard work. Tell your team that we said thank you for all of their hard work, and we very much appreciate them. They're probably all watching anyway at home. So thank you, and I appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I get out my soapbox just for a second?
Absolutely. Take it.
I, I think I see five remaining residents out in the audience from when we had the communication from citizens. I wish, and I'm glad to see you here, because we need more people to stay here and listen to our discussions about the budget for the town because that affects your lives directly. And I just hope you pass that on to your neighbors, and I wish that we had more of the residents would stay and listen to these discussions. It's important.
And, and you're right, Councilmember Anderson, as we approved the, the motion to go forward with a bond for this evening that you'll be getting a ballot for in November, you're hearing from us firsthand that our budget tonight that we have just passed is lower than it was last year and lower than it was the year before. I challenge you to go out and find that happening in other parts of this country or other parts of this state. We are a fast-growing community. We are adding hundreds of people constantly. In the time that I've lived in Gilbert, we've added over 200,000 people. And I know a lot of you have just moved in recently and think that's crazy, but in the time that I've lived here, we've added to over 200,000 people. So please understand that we are doing the most with the least, and we work hard to make sure your dollar goes as far as it can go. Thank you. Got my mic off. I will adjourn the special meeting and reconvene our regular meeting, our administrative items. We have a council administration to consider the adoption of the resolution of adopting an official town seal. Because as our research was going on, and my research through staff was going on, we realized that our original town seal has never officially been adopted by anybody. And do we have to do a motion for that? Thank you, Chris. I'm going to move that we approve the adoption of the official town seal. I have a motion by myself, Mayor Peterson, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Please vote. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. For boards, commissions, and committees, do I have any reports from council on anything that you're working on?
Mayor, I have just a couple from my assignments. Last week, our redevelopment commission held an orientation for our commissioners. And I want to thank Chris for paying our attorney for being there, and Amanda Elliott. We put together some scenarios, and they actually were able to walk through the process of doing a motion and understanding their role as they make decisions up on the dais. We also asked them to go down and introduce themselves from the podium to see what it feels like when you're down there talking to people up on the dais. And I, I just appreciate the staff taking that time. I think they were very appreciative. They're a very new commission. And speaking firsthand, when you first come up here, it's a lot different on this side of the table than it is down there in the audience. And so I just bring that to you as council members, that if you're liaison for some of those commissions is you get into reappointments, that might be a good opportunity to help them do their service. Mayor, I know you'll probably talk about the Veterans Advisory Board, but I just wanted to thank everybody on there for all of the work they did for the ceremony this past weekend, and I'm so sorry that I missed it. And then today, I don't know if you were going to talk about Sister Cities, too, but I, we got invitation from our sister city in Antrim Newton Abbey, a good friend of ours for a very, very long time. Mayor Billy Webb, as of today, was appointed, and then also thanking Noreen for her vice-chair position. I just mentioned those two briefly just because they've been longtime friends of ours and have been back and forth over the years. And Vice Mayor Stephen Ross was appointed at Vice Mayor today. But what was really fun is that we were able to watch it live as it was happening. And so we appreciate that invitation and the shout-out to their friends in Gilbert when they did that. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just a couple of reports. One from the, these are both committees I work on representing the town. One is with AMWA. And you'll be hearing, you've already heard that there is going to be a shortage declared probably next year on the Colorado River. You're going to be hearing more and more about that, and it's going to be something that the media will pick up on and probably try to put everything in a negative light. So I want you to know that, kind of the tagline is that there may be a shortage on the river, but there will not be a shortage at the tap. This was all been planned for, and the public needs to know that, that the shortage has been planned for and it will not harm our water supply at all here in the town. The other is the, at the League of Cities, the committee I'm on, a couple of resolutions, possible resolutions coming forward. One was, I thought we'd be interested in, is some legislation that apparently didn't get passed last year, but they're going to try again to limit the use of fireworks after 10 o'clock. There can be no more fireworks in municipalities, and that's something that apparently is going to be brought back up to the legislature, I think, next year again. So, and I've, I don't know if any of you have received complaints about fireworks, but I've received a lot of them. And this is, the state controls it. This is one of the only places where, I guess, localities can have some control is the hours that they can shoot off the fireworks. So they're making a run at that. The other is, and I know, this, Patrick, this would interest you. We talked a little bit about some, some legislation was proposed by a nonprofit out of Texas about homelessness, and it had to do with limiting the camps that are set up for homeless. And it actually gave the power to the state, apparently, to designate places where those camps could be. And it didn't go anywhere in the legislature, but they're going to try again next year. And it's something that we suggested that MAG has been working on the homelessness issue a lot, and it's something that should interface with whatever's happening. But we don't want to have something imposed on us one way or the other where we may not have any control. Thank you.
I will comment on the homelessness issue. We will be having a presentation from MAG during our June 15th study session because MAG has been in the process of bringing some points forward for homelessness, and there is a prospective regional approach that would include cities and towns having to potentially add some money to the coffers, we'll say. And so we will be having a study session on that, so you will hear all about that. I would like to thank the members of the Citizen Transportation Task Force that came this evening, Alex Cardona, Lawrence, Lawrence Passach, I hate to, sorry, Jeff Hamilton, and Darren Robertge. We would not have been able to do this work without all of you. I also would like to thank the members of the Veterans Advisory Board. As Councilmember Tilke said, we had an amazing event here yesterday at Town Hall. It was the first time that we have held the Memorial Day celebration here on the lawn right outside this building, and it went so well. I was so impressed and so proud of them. It started with, and I have to mention this because it gave everybody goosebumps, two of our police officers on their motorcycles, leading a procession of motorcycles around our dirt track out there. And it was just moving. And who would think that just watching eight, 10, 12 motorcycles driving in and around? But it really touched everyone out there. We had an amazing speaker who is an amazing young veteran who is originally from Mesa and has now chosen Gilbert as his home. I really appreciate the fact that when we can bring our own in to present to our community. And he did an amazing job on, on his speech, so I give him a lot of credit. This Veterans Advisory Board was put together a year ago in the middle of a pandemic and has done so much in so little time with so much, so many adversities. And they are so, they are so really focused on connecting our community with our veterans and making sure that the veterans are connected to each other. On some of my assignments, the homelessness is an issue that we'll be discussing. I have a league meeting tomorrow for a couple of policy items that we'll be discussing. And then we have entered a couple of policy items to, for potential resolutions at the league around the actual group home issue. So even though I couldn't, can't comment to anything that was said during communications from citizens, I have also emailed Senator Nancy Barto on the legislation that she moved forward and hoping to see some changes and potentially the governor relooking at some of the things that he vetoed last week because of the budget discussion. So that's, anyone else for reports on anything? That was a lot. That was a lot. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have a policy item, policy number 2102. Consider the approval of this policy. Do we have anyone to present on this? Oh, Kelly. Ms. Kelly Fost, you get to talk.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, I don't have a formal presentation, but every year, we take a look at the financial policies and update them for things that are happening. The two changes that are happening here is, one, memorializing our zero-based policy. As we were going through the What Works City initiatives, we realized we hadn't written that down anywhere. And so we wanted to make sure that that was captured in the policies specifically, even though it's been a tradition and a practice for us for many years. The second one is that we took a look at the minimum fund balance for the Health Trust and recognized that the medical claims have more volatility than our typical 25% minimum fund balance can handle, as we saw in having to do a loan to the Health Trust a couple of years ago. And so we talked, we did some research, talked with the Health Trust Board, and are recommending an increase to 30% in that area just because of its increased volatility. And the Health Trust Board has agreed with that, and so we're bringing it here to change that in the policy as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Yentes, did you have a comment? No? No?
No. Do we motion for approval?
Oh, yeah, please. Thank you.
A heartily motion to approve.
I say, I guess just move to approve this policy item. Yeah.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Oh, it's, thank you. All in, oh, excuse me. Please vote. I just had a flashback to Planning Commission. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. I shut my mic off again. We will go ahead and recess our regular meeting and reconvene in executive session upstairs. Thank you, everyone.